We are going to be live streaming tonight from the city of Springfield, Missouri City Council meeting. The Terry Stock will be speaking tonight, apparently, as well as his wife. So we're going live just a few minutes early, let a few of you all come in. And I'm going to shut up now and turn it around. Love you. Thanks for being here. Terry is not here yet. But we'll see what we see. Hey, Lady J, thanks for being here. We're only about three minutes away from starting. Dubbs, thanks for being here, bubba. Right. We're about one minute, one minute and counting. Set to start at 6:30 Central. I will see what we see.
Good evening and welcome to our Monday, November 18, 2024 regular meeting of the City Council. As we begin this evening, may join the ad rising as you are able to pause before.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Don't start your motors.
Horton.
Here.
McGold.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Hosmer.
Here.
Hardinger.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Amen.
Here. The events of the November 4, 2024 council meeting and the special council meetings on, excuse me, on November 12 will be considered at the November 16, 2024 regular meeting of the City Council. May I move to the finalization of approval of consent agenda? Mr. Connor, have you received any requests or even ideas from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Does anyone in the audience have an item of favor which they wish to have removed from the consent agenda? Anyone on council have an item of favor which they have any comments on the consent agenda? Say it.
Yes. Joko, thanks for being here, bubba.
I just have a quick question. That one of the projects is a side project. I don't want to take it off and set agenda. But if you could send us some kind of little sketch that kind of describes where it is. It had some verbiage, but it was just very minimal. I'm just interested in it. No problems at all.
And the consent agenda is finalized and adopted. We now move to the city manager report. Today's good evening, sir.
Farm, good to see you, brother.
All right, I want to offer a special thank you to the City Jelly's Cruise for addressing Martin Waterman break that occurred in Battlefield and Bull Hatch at the weekend. Just needs to probably survive. That we don't see that very often. It was a major one and the crews got right on it. And even though we have the half of oil advisory that was issued, it's better than the oil order. And usually those last longer than 24 hours to get everybody back up and going again. So I know we work real hard and just thank them for that. So partnerships, I want to congratulate the sisters, Sherri Perkins and Renee Texter on the November 12 groundbreaking for the table. The restaurant coming soon, the former site of Springfield Blottermill, International Avenue and Chestnut. The City's Department of Workforce and Economic, Workforce Development and Economic Vitality has pleased to help bring this project to fruition. And they provided $85,000 micro enterprise loan funded by HUSS.
Oh, thanks for being here.
And as well, I believe if I recall correctly, there was a tax income finance.
Stephanie Johnson being here.
I'm sure they're grateful and they'll be out and running. Some public information sessions. We have Galloway Street. We have the Street Widening Project. And this is a public information session from 4:30 to 6:00. And that's on Tuesday, November 19th. It all stands at Anglican Church at 2751 East Galloway Street. And that just provides enough data on construction and information on land closures and other legislative aspects. So I'm sure the folks out there will be appreciative of that. Community events, we have a few of those. We have the marriage tree lighting ceremony and holiday show. And that's at Park Central Square, as you know, on Saturday, the 23rd of this month. The festival kicks off at 6 o'clock with the Bible of Santa Claus on the SGF Holiday Express. A lot of activities, free hot chocolate, pictures for Santa, who doesn't want pictures for Santa, right? And the kind of homeless and maybe the rich haven't shared.
I don't.
But hopefully the kids are used to that. But it's a wonderful event and we always encourage folks to go out there and take advantage of it. We have the Turkey Trot, the 30th Annual Thanksgiving Day Turkey Trot. It's five gated unlock presented by Hall and Sleep BC. Takes place Thursday, the 28th, as you might expect. Eight o'clock every morning downtown Springfield, rain or shine. So if you're runners, run, regardless of the weather. So rain or shine, I don't know about walkers, but I know runners do that. People can register online at artward.org, so for those that are interested. The Gardens of Glow, opportunity to stroll through our dazzling, rare woodland before the 225,000 festive lights. Expect sitting in our Japanese structures, landscaping with Mizumoto Japanese store. So that's a wonderful event that a lot of people like to get out for and encourage folks to do that. Hopefully the weather will be good for that. That's my report. We have to take any questions before we go on to the next slide.
Thank you. We had two short-term rental appeals that we carried on. We had a lot of the output and opportunity to pay taxes on those properties. And you know, those taxes have been paid in full.
Yes, they have been paid in full.
For vote.
Yes. Sir, thank you.
All right, thank you. So next up, we have Dave Burton, community development specials for Congress of Missouri Sanction. He's here to present a special award to City's Speaker.
Thank you, Secretary of State, Major and Council members. Just a few words, Missouri Good Neighbor Week runs September 28th to October 4th. This is the third year for that. The state legislature signed that into law in 2021. But one of the new additions this year was actually a competition amongst cities. There were various ways that cities could score points provided by the Missouri Municipal. Small category went to Houston, Missouri. Excelsior Springs was the next category. Sykesville, Missouri. The judges provided.
Sorry, that was a fat finger, mama.
This year to Ferguson, Missouri, because of the efforts made there to connect neighbors. And then for the large category, metro size, population 30,000 and up, the city of Springfield achieved enough points to be named the most neighborly city in Missouri in that size category. Let me just share a couple of highlights from that. The residents of the city reported over 3,000 different acts of neighboring that happened during that week. We know of at least 18 block parties that were registered, thanks to your mayor's acting debut in the Storm Shorts PSA at Payway 3. We also had 15 individuals nominated as the most engaged neighbor in Missouri. We gave 20 awards. We had 140 people nominated and six of those were selected from the city of Springfield. Those were Chance Parish, Nancy Williams, Stephanie Johnson, Jamie Payton, Rudy Widmar, and Rebecca Welsh. So they actually earned statewide recognition as well. So on behalf of end of extension and engage neighbor program, I want to present to you this plaque commemorating the recognition for the most neighborly city, Springfield, Missouri, during Missouri Good Neighbor Week.
Well, let me thank Mr. Burton for his leadership on this. He has really been an inspiration. I've heard him speak several times about the importance of being and then they were getting to know your neighbors and their stories and interacting with them. So quite, quite a story.
No, I'm just observing that Terry Stock is supposed to speak.
Going on is a grocery store. And there was a lady in front of me in the checkout line and she was buying pumpkins. We had a whole grocery cart full of pumpkins. And she turned around, she knew who I was, she followed. She said, Mayor, I'm so sorry for taking so much time. I said, I don't have a problem. But then she turned around and said, we had a block party on our block last week. The word done. Thank you so much for that and add an attribute to our city court for doing that. We appreciate your attendance this evening. We'll now move to second rating and final pass of Mr. Simpson.
Given that the taxes have been paid in full for the two appeals that we had postponed, I would move to suspend the rules and take items 7.1 and 7.2 out of order on the agenda.
Mr. Simpson has moved to suspend the rules to take items 7.1 and 7.2 of the agenda items out of order. Is there a second? Or is a second for Mr. Carroll discussion on that? Singing down, please vote. Mr. Simpson's motion has passed. We now move under resolution to 7.1 in our agenda of the Council of 2024 at 220.
Appreciate you being here, John.
2024, that's 220. A resolution granting a short-term rental type 2 permit for the property owner located at IRS 7 West Glittering Street for the purpose of allowing the establishment of a short-term rental type 2 pursuant to section 36-473 of Land Development Code.
We had the public hearing on this on November 4. It was a resolution that is now in front of council pending as a result of our actions on that day. Discussion before we vote.
Dubbs, my name is Chris.
Sure.
How you determine how much the applicant owes in taxes?
In response to your question.
Rears up, Dubb.
It's a matter of self-reporting by the, by the. They, they would be responsible for submitting the number of the gross revenues for each model that needed to be reported on in.
Hey, JC.
Taxes paid on, on the gross revenue.
So is there any way that the city verifies or audits that report to determine whether they actually paid the taxes?
We do have some abilities to look into our compliance platform to see like where there are some vacancies and blackout periods. We don't have it completely perfected at this point.
Will the new bill or the new ordinance try and do, where we give platforms to collect? I assume that would help.
That would definitely be one way because if they're, if they're hooking with the platform, then there's, there's no, no question.
Thank you.
Mr. Simpson.
First thing to thank you and your team and to you and your team for your work on this and bringing these properties into compliance with the law. All, I'm going to plead guilty before this bill and the following bill. Now that the taxes have been paid, because I'm looking at the documents provided with them. There was no opposition. There was neighborhood support and just to try and reach the required threshold. But I think that we did the right thing delaying this and giving the opportunity to address it. And I think we've also, you know, whatever the short-term rental regulations look like moving forward, established their precedent that, you know, if you're going to go through this application process, you need to make sure that everything was resolved prior to reaching an review of the process, which includes paying to any, the little taxes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So if there are questions, please. Council of 2024 at 220 passes. Council of 2024 at 221.
Council of 2024-221, a resolution granting a short-term rental type 2 permit for the property owner located at 912 South Middleton Avenue for the purpose of allowing the establishment of a short-term rental type 2 pursuant to section 36-473 of Land Development Code.
With the former bill, the Public Hearing's held on November 4. Consideration was postponed until this meeting. As was due to the taxes that have been paid. If there are any other questions or comments, I'll press the floor. Singing down, please vote.
Mike, thanks for being here, bubba.
Council of 2024-221 passes. And now we revert to our regular schedule on the second rate final pass of Council of 2024-225.
Council of 2024-225, a general ordinance amendment, general ordinance number 3645, as amended, establishing Burn and Conservation District Number Two, generally referenced to as the Run Treeture Conservation District, Section Four, Subarea A, 3D. Regulations Subareas B to allow demo office conversions as permitted, as a committed use in accordance with specific standards and amending Subarea B, A, build to line to allow for a minimum of 15 feet on the primary street.
Public hearing on this bill was held on November 4. It's now front of council for consideration. What questions or comments members of council have. Singing down, please vote. Council of 2024-225 passes. Council of 2024-226.
Council of 2024-226, a special ordinance vacating 100 blocks of West Hubby Street upon the occurrence of certain conditions.
Public hearing on this bill was held on November 4. It's now front of council for consideration, what questions or comments members of council have. Singing down, please vote. Council of 2024-226 passes. Council of 2024-227.
Council of 2024-227, a special ordinance vacating a portion of public right of way located at 1475 North Campbell Avenue between the 400 blocks of West Division Street and West Hubby Street upon the occurrence of certain conditions.
Public hearing on this bill was held on November 4. It's now front of council for consideration, what questions or comments members of council have. Singing down, please vote. Council of 2024-227 passes. Council of 2024-228.
Council of 2024-228, a special ordinance vacating a portion from the east-west alley located between 400 blocks of West Division Street and West Hubby Street upon the occurrence of certain conditions.
Public hearing on this bill was held on November 4. It's now front of council for consideration, what questions or comments members of council have. Singing down, please vote. Council of 2024-228 passes. Council of 2024.
Hey, Joey, thanks for being here, bubba.
...in the Springfield Land Development Code, section 36-306, official zoning method goes for interpretation by reuniting approximately 5.4 acres of property generally located with the 817 West El Camino Alamo Drive from Modus Stigal to Emory Residential District with conditional overlay district 214 to Office District, establishing conditional overlay district number 261 and abducting an updated official zoning map.
Please believe.
I'll be recusing myself.
Mr. Carroll.
I'll be recusing myself.
I will also be recusing myself and ask the mayor, Pro Tim, to see the chair lower to comply with provisions of city code. We will remain at the diastolic accusing ourselves. Mr. Mayor, pro Tim.
Public comment was taken on this bill in November for the 2024 City Council meeting. Any comments or questions from council? Singing down now, please vote. Council of 2024-229 passes.
Council of 2024-232.
Council of 2024-232, a special ordinance authorized in the city of Springfield, Missouri through the city manager does not need to enter into a master equipment lease purchase agreement and related schedule of equipment, the proceeds of which will be used to pay the cost of acquiring and installing equipment for the city's parks department and to do all things necessary to carry out the lease purchase transaction, including executing certain documents in connection therewith and mending the budget of the city for fiscal year 2024 to 2025 in the amount of $685,940.
Public hearing on this bill was held on November 4. It's now front of council for consideration, what questions or comments members of council have. Singing down, please vote. Council of 2024-232 passes. Council of 2024-233.
Council of 2024-233, a general ordinance amending Springfield City Code Chapter 58 Health and Sanitation, Article Two, Food and Food Establishments, Division Two, Restaurants, Section 58-51, Definitions, to create a new food service permit type definitions to be referred to as limited food establishment and amending Springfield City Code Chapter 58 Health and Sanitation, Article Two, Food and Food Establishments, Division Two, Restaurants, Section 58-53. Permit required, fees, suspension or revocation to add limited permit to the list of permits that are subject to permit fees based on the annual fee study.
Public hearing on this bill was held on November 4. It's now front of council for consideration, what questions? Mr. Mayor, some council have. Singing down, please vote. Council of 2024-233 passes. Council of 2024-234.
Council of 2024-234, a general ordinance amending the Springfield City Code Chapter 58 Health and Sanitation, Article Two, Food and Food Establishments, Division Two, Restaurants, Section 58-53. Permit required, fees, suspension or revocation to change the length of a local food permit from six months to 12 months.
Public hearing on this bill was held on November 4. It's now front of council for consideration, what questions or comments members of council have. Singing down, please vote. Council of 2024-234 passes. Council of 2024-235.
Council of 2024-235, a special ordinance authorized in the city manager does not need to accept the local law enforcement crime gun intelligence center integration initiative grant in the amount of $700,000 from the United States Department of Justice and turn it into an.
This is important right here.
By letting the division of the grand funds and amending the budget for the Springfield Police Department for fiscal year 2024 to 2025 in the amount of $700,000.
Public hearing on this bill was held on November 4. It's now front of council for consideration, what questions or comments are there from council? Singing down, please vote.
Of course.
Council of 2024-235 passes. Council of 2024-236.
Council of 2024-236, a general ordinance amending section 78-111, divisions, excuse me, definitions and enacting new section 78-117 vehicle owner responsibilities of the city code.
Public hearing on this bill was held on November 4. It's now front of council for consideration, what questions or comments are there from council?
I asked that question about the, there's the definition owner, owner means the registered owner of a motor vehicle. What if someone's, they're driving a vehicle that's not licensed, not registered? What if the city chairman, you were, you guys have a question?
It should just be whoever's on the title. Somebody should be on the title.
But if they've not. I have seen with unregistered vehicles.
Sure.
Vehicles don't have license plates that are operating since Springfield all the time. Previous owner may be, you know, vehicles are sold, but previous owner has signed a sale, but the title is still the old owner. That's supposed to be a fraud.
What's up, God squash?
Really, you know, what we're saying right now is that if you have the registered owner, which means the people are driving and leaving without a license plate, which I think the people testify to that is some of the problems. There's a lot of these vehicles, motorcycles probably don't have any registered owner.
Sure, and I assume somebody has to be the owner. Sure, and I assume somebody has to be the owner record, right, even if it has been sold. And so I would hope the way that it work is either go get the previous owner who could be able to tell us, well, I sold that to Joe a month ago, and then be able to provide that contact information.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Saying down, please vote. Councilor, two thousand twenty-four dash two-three-six passes. Councilor, two thousand twenty-four dash two-three-seven.
Councilor, two thousand twenty-four dash two-three-seven, a general ordinance amending section thirty-six dash three twenty-one definitions and section thirty-six dash four-seventy-three short-term rentals of the city code.
Public hearing on this bill was held on December, or excuse me, November four, is now front of council for consideration, what questions or comments are there from members of council? Mr. Jensen.
Yeah, yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. After the public hearing we had at our previous meeting, I met with Cameron Lamar, who spoke with us, as well as some other folks who do this type of work. And I requested staff to prepare amendments that would address some of the concerns, but it's going to take a little bit of time. So recognizing that, I would make a motion to postpone this bill.
Excuse, excuse, Mr. Jensen, excuse me. Before you make your motion, once you make your motion, if it gets a second, we have to go immediately to a vote. So before you make your motion, explain what it is you intend to do with your motion, and then I'll ask any council members who want to comment before you formally make the motion, because under the rules, we would then have to take a second and go immediately to a vote, so if you would, sir.
Understood, yes, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. But essentially, the concern was with the five hundred foot buffer, preventing a model that allows for homes to be redeveloped for owner occupancy. Essentially those homes that cost quite a bit and require quite a bit of investment, where you're not able to generate a sufficient return on investment to immediately sell those for owner occupancy. A common practice is to utilize a short-term rental for a few years to help recoup those costs and then sell it for owner occupancy. And so I've asked staff to prepare an amendment to this bill that would provide an administrative appeal process that would not come to council, but could ideally be approved by staff. That would, one, require a letter of support from the neighborhood association, and two, require that that short-term rental be converted for either owner or long-term tenant occupancy within ten years. And I've talked through that language with the folks that do that type of development within West Central and other neighborhoods, and have received positive feedback on that. So it still allows for an economic return on the property, ensuring that it's a viable financial investment, but also ensures that ultimately these single-family homes are remaining owner occupancy at some point in the future to address our housing crisis.
So Mr. Jensen will be moving in just a moment to postpone consideration of Council two thousand twenty-four dash two-three-seven to the December sixteen council meeting. Before he makes that motion, does any one of council have any comments? Mr. Hosmer.
Well, my understanding is waiting, because amendment would require staff to calendar these properties for ten years. And each property would be calendared for a ten-year period, and after that ten-year period, we have to go back and change that designation to where they couldn't do a short-term rental anymore. I mean, we've had enough problems with trying to enforce the law that we've got right now to put a ten-year statute or limitations period where they can do it for ten years. I think it exacerbates the problems that staff is having right now, it costs me time that they spend in doing short-term rentals right now. Plus, it's doing the exact opposite of what we should be wanting to do, we should be wanting to encourage homeownership in the city. We have a city that has sixty percent of our residents living in the concrete. That is a recipe for poverty, it's a recipe for a lot of the problems that we have. And I think we've got to start linking these problems that we have together with some of our policy. This makes absolutely no sense. You're letting staff, letting, make these decisions that are impacting
Right on properties, don't make property taxes for the city, or the county.
I think this, we've gone through the committee process with this bill, it's not perfect by my estimation, I know other people have some concerns, but it's a better solution to what we're doing with right now. It also gives us the ability to use the platforms to collect the taxes that we haven't been collecting.
Like I said.
The way tactic that's going to push us in, since we had one meeting in December, this amendment goes on in December, we're not going to be able to get to this until January or February. I think this is a bad option.
All right, brother man.
If Mr. Jensen makes his motion.
Just have a question for, for staff. If we did decide that the vote on the underlying bill tonight, would there, does that preclude us from potentially taking up a bill in the future to adopt the type of changes that we're talking about in the amendment?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Jensen, I think we're ready, you have anything else to say, if not, I think we're ready for your motion. And after he makes his vote, if it gets a second, we will immediately to a vote, so, Mr. Jensen.
Yeah, I would just say, Councilman Hosmer, I respect that, those concerns and know that I share the concerns about owner occupancy. I would just note that in neighborhoods like West Central, where homes have a lower resale value, it is not possible to fix up a home, invest the amount of money that's required, and be able to immediately turn it around and sell it for owner occupancy. So that's, that's really what I'm trying to address in those neighborhoods that are struggling, providing a viable financial path for reinvestment in those properties. So whether this, this motion to table passes, or I end up bringing a separated bill forward in the future, just know that that's the mindset. So with that explanation, Mr. Mayor, I would motion to table this bill until our December sixteen meeting.
Mr. Jensen, is there a postponed table, Council two thousand twenty-four dash two-three-seven to the December sixteen? The city council is our second to that motion, that's the second from this party. We will move immediately to a vote, all in favor of vote aye, this, if you vote aye, you will, you will want to postpone the, the bill until December sixteen. If you don't know, you will not do that, so please vote. And Mr. Jensen's motion fails, we now move to the underlying bill, Council two thousand twenty-four dash two-three-seven, with public hearing itself on November four, are there questions or comments to the members of council before we vote? Saying down, please vote.
More taxes.
Councilor, two thousand twenty-four dash two-three-seven passes, Councilor, two thousand twenty-four dash two-three-eight.
Councilor, two thousand twenty-four dash two-three-eight, a special ordinance amending the commercial street tax increment financing redevelopment plan to remove certain properties from the redevelopment area, accepting the deposit into the commercial street tip. Special allocation funding connection for approval on said first amendment to offset the subsequent reduction of future payments and lieu taxes into the special allocation fund, and directing the city manager, does not need to implement such changes to the commercial street tip redevelopment funding.
Public hearing on this bill was held on November four, is now front of council for consideration, what questions, what comments members of council have. Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to disclose that Titus Williams is a client of my company.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have a few opinions to express on this particular bill.
Please vote.
I will be supporting this bill, but I also would like to note that I essentially feel that we're, we're at a point of overturn with this
Exactly.
whole redevelopment plan, because once we decided not to approve each redevelopment project separately, we've essentially set this redevelopment up for guaranteed approval, in my opinion. The redevelopment plan was approved in such a way that it would never make sense to deny any phase of this plan. It's airtight and will get so far into the approvals that it would, it wouldn't even make sense to oppose any subsequent phase of this redevelopment plan. I also would like to express, at the last meeting, Mr. Williams had expressed a couple reasons why Pacific South hasn't been proceeded with, and of course, you know, we heard him saying, you know, the environmental cleanup is certainly a necessary aspect of redevelopment of Pacific South that where the expectation was, was that that was going to start immediately. But I believe that we are at a point right now where we, where it's now known that the amenities for Pacific South are in a different phase of this redevelopment plan. And so therefore, it wouldn't even make sense to deny any other phase of this redevelopment plan, because Pacific South is directly connected with phases that are not even approved yet. And if Mr. Williams is not able to successfully market the amenities that will, that are forthcoming in phases that are not approved, Pacific South probably doesn't even, will probably not even be viable. So again, I will be supporting this particular phase, but we have essentially, the way that we've approved this, again, omnibus redevelopment plan, we've set it up to where disapproval of any other phases wouldn't even make sense at this, this point. So those are just the comments that I wanted to make on this redevelopment plan.
I'm also to be supporting this, but I do have some questions about why we can't do a TIF, you know, it's, my opinion, I understand some question about what we're going to do, but we, we have a policy in the city of Springfield, we can't do TIFs with chapter ninety-nine.
The dairy stop has arrived.
But I would like to find out whether other jurisdictions allow both the TIF and the light designation. So I think commercial street, now I'm not a big fan of light, but commercial street is one area where it makes some sense, especially if you're going to save old buildings, because it is, it does cost more to renovate an old building. But if we can't, I mean, obviously, there's a problem dealing with, when you're using the TIF money and you take property out of the TIF, they have less dollars to give to the bank, and you want to go on commercial street. So I think that's, I think it's an important thing to keep the TIF, I know it's only got seven years left on that TIF, but it could be, I assume it's going to be renewed. But I, I'd like to, I'm to support this, but I would like us to take a little deeper dive on what other jurisdictions do, whether they allow both a TIF and chapter three fifty-three and ninety-nine, like that.
We can get that.
There are other questions or comments? Saying down, please vote. Councilor, two thousand twenty-four dash two-three passes. Now that we begin the discussion of council members, let me remind everyone of the rules regarding public comments and the accountability of the agenda. Take note of that, number seven twenty-three through four through twenty-six. If you wish to address, you must sign up to the city first before you visit a town dedicated whether you support or oppose the bill. Make your comments in the city council, not spat on anyone, remember all the audience. Under resolutions, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for being here, Kate man.
Based on the passage of Councilor two thousand twenty-four dash two-thirty-seven, items seven point three and seven point four are noted in council report for consideration tonight, and will have to go through a different process, and will not be verbally considered. So we'll move to item two thousand twenty-four dash
We now move to Council two thousand twenty-four dash two-four.
Councilor, two thousand twenty-four dash two-four-four, a resolution requiring the initial intent of the city of Springfield, Missouri, to issue its special allocation bonds in a amount not to exceed thirty-five million dollars to finance the cost of expansion and improvements of the Noblesville Sanctuary landfill.
Thirty-five million dollars from fucking landfill.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
The bill before you tonight is a resolution declaring the city's intent to issue thirty-five million dollars in special obligation bonds to finance construction of several improvements of the city's Noblesville Sanctuary landfill. The city was granted a forty-two acre extension to the landfill in twenty nineteen, and that extension included eight new landfill cells. And the Department of Environmental Services is in the final stages of preparing a bid package for the construction of the initial cells within that expansion areas. This would also include the construction of several support activities, including environmental infrastructure improvements, excavation, liner construction, stormwater management improvements, access roads, and utility improvements. When constructed, these projects would provide approximately fifteen to twenty-five years of disposal airspace for the citizens of the region, and the debt service for these funds is recovered by landfill clearing fees collected by the city integrated public infrastructure system enterprise fund over that same time period. If approved, the department has a tentative schedule to issue bids, issue the bid package and the associated bonds in early coming year. Thank you for your time, we'd like to ask you a question.
Thank you, questions for Mr. Roberts. This is not a committee, the city does express the intent.
That's correct.
Questions for Mr. Roberts. Sir, thank you. By the scheduled speakers.
Yes, sir.
In case the public hearing is declared closed, and this is our resolution, now front of council for both questions or comments from members of council. Saying down, please vote. Councilor, two thousand twenty-four dash two-four-four passes, Councilor, two thousand twenty-four dash two-four-five.
Thanks for being here, firm.
Councilor, two thousand twenty-four dash two-four-five, a resolution adopting the Springfield Groundfields program evolving one fund policy manual.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and universal council. The Crown House Revolving One Fund Program and Related Policy Manual is underbought several updates to enhance its effectiveness in alignment with the evolving priorities since it was established in two thousand nine. The program manual provides information on RLF program requirements, application procedures, site and applicant eligibility,
Thanks for being here, bud.
and all other program parameters. These changes incorporate current EPA regulations, insight stage from previous RLF projects, particularly emphasizing the flexibility of these funds as a financing tool to support redevelopment and enhance guidance on progress processes, requirements, and regulations. The manual also incorporates criteria that aligns with the city's priorities, ensuring project selection that supports job creation and economic growth, increase tax revenues to drive economic revitalization, as well as leveraging complementary financing sources and align, and alignment with the city's comprehensive plan for SGF and other local planning initiatives. These changes will ensure that the RLF program remains effective, relevant, and supports both the city's goals and EPA's priorities. Are you happy to answer any questions?
Thank you, questions for Mr. Holmes. Are the scheduled speakers?
Yes, sir.
In case the public hearing is declared closed as a resolution, this is now front of council for consideration, questions or comments from members of council. Saying down, please vote. Councilor, two thousand twenty-four dash two-four-five passes, Councilor, two thousand twenty-four dash two-five-nine.
Councilor, two thousand twenty-four dash two-five-nine, a resolution defining the results of the special municipal election on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, under the Home Rule Charter of the city of Springfield, Missouri, on the question of whether to enact the city sales tax of the rate of three quarters of one percent, one quarter for the purpose of funding public safety initiatives, to refund the remaining obligation of the Springfield police officer and firefighter's pension, increasing police officers increasing police officer carrefighters' pay, would set one quarter to not sunset, and two quarters for the purpose of funding projects consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, to encourage capital investments, community and neighborhood initiatives, and front projects, would set two quarters to sunset after a period of 10 years.
Mr. Gage.
Thank you. City Attorney George Paul, address this.
Good evening, Mayor. This is a resolution can the city elect or is always going to be November 5 election? Question one, city street works, sales tax passed to 61.9% in the votes, 41,768 voting yes, 25,696 voting no, and ever minor D tax will be effective for one.
Questions for Ms. Paul? Sir, thank you. Are the scheduled speakers?
Yes, sir.
In that case, public hearing is declared closed as a resolution. This is now in front of council. Consideration of questions, comments, and members of council. Say them now, please, both. Council 2024-259 passes under grants, Council 2024-206.
Council Bill 2024-246, a special ordinance authorized by the city manager designate to accept $1 million in grant funds from the United States Environmental Protection Agency for the evolving loan fund grant supplemental funding program to provide loans and sub grants for environmental cleanups in Springfield through the city's groundfield evolving loan fund. Amending the Department of Economic Vitality and Workforce Development for fiscal year 2024-2025 in the amount of $1 million and declaring that this ordinance qualifies for approval in one reading pursuant to Section 2.16, subsection 25 of the city charter.
Mr. Gage.
Thank you.
Ms. Owens, address this.
Good evening, good.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Yes, this one is pretty straightforward. We are asking to accept the $1 million grant from the Environmental Protection Agency to support the groundfield evolving loan fund. As discussed previously, the city has operated on groundfields programs since 1999. These funds help to provide assistance to businesses or nonprofits that want to clean up potentially contaminated sites throughout the city. I would be happy to answer any questions or get into more of this if they would be desired.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Owens, address this one.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I was just curious about how often do you apply for this particular grant? Is it yearly and are you usually awarded a million dollars every year?
No, it is not necessarily yearly that we apply. EPA in recent years has had a more steady availability of potential funding. We did apply for this funding. It is the most, I believe, that we have ever been awarded at one time. But we are trying to take advantage of any potential programs that all of our federal partners at Region 7 are releasing. But it does sort of ebb and flow with the availability of funds and different programs that the EPA is supporting in a given year.
Thank you. I have one other question. Are you aware of the previous whole contamination that has been in the process of being cleaned up in Tom Watkins' neighborhood?
I'm not.
Is the curvy?
Right, yes, I'm aware of the project, but I'm not sure that I could answer any specific questions.
Well, I just wanted to, I'm glad that you've heard about it. I just wanted to bring to your attention that they're now in the phase where they're going to start talking about redevelopment. And I just wanted to, you know, make sure that someone from your office, when those conversations are, when they commence concerning redevelopment in these contaminated areas, I would love for someone from your office to be there because they started getting feedback from the neighbors in terms of what they'd like to see as far as commercial development in Tom Watkins, given the type of cleanup that's going on. And so I'm thinking that groundfield funding in this area would be, you know, this area would be eligible? Should the conversation progresses far enough to get to the point where individuals will start buying commercial property in the area and think about doing some redevelopment or organizations? I know Eden Village is over there too and really close to that contaminated site. And so I'm thinking, would this type of situation qualify for groundfield funds that is offered by the city?
Yes, we would encourage anyone that is interested in redevelopment and may have questions about a site, that they contact our Department of Workforce and Economic Vitality as they are pursuing those opportunities. In addition to the evolving loan fund that we're accepting grant awards for now, we have also applied for other EPA grant funding through a community-wide assessment grant. So that is an application that we did report to the EPA and we will know about probably in first quarter of next year as to whether that is awarded. But there are numerous other programs that city staff may be able to help potential, you know, individuals or businesses identify. And honestly, the earlier that we can speak to those prospects, you know, we may be able to answer some questions or help guide them in the right direction. So we do encourage anyone to reach out related to any groundfields or redevelopment that they're planning because we may be able to connect them to resources or information that will be helpful.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Questions? Thank you. Are the scheduled speakers?
Yes, sir.
In that case, the public hearing is declared closed as a grant that's not qualified for one reading. It's in front of council for consideration, questions or comments from members of council. Say them now, please, both.
Pleasure.
Council 2024-246 passes, Council 2024-247.
Council 2024-247, a special ordinance authorized by the city manager designate to accept funds from Missouri Communities Trust Fund, Missouri Arts Council, in the amount of $10 million to support the design and construction of the Springfield Art Museum renovation and expansion project, amending the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget in the amount of $10 million to appropriate funds and declaring that this ordinance qualifies for approval in one reading.
Hey, Ben, thank you for being here, brother.
Mr. Gage. Thank you. Nick Nelson, Art Museum Director, provides the status.
Go on, do it.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept funds from the Missouri Communities Trust Fund, through the Missouri Arts Council, in the amount of $10 million to support the design and construction of the art museum renovation and expansion project, amending the budget fiscal year 24 through 25, in the amount of $10 million. Our House Bill 2012, Section 12, 030. The state of Missouri has appropriated $10 million in its 25 fiscal year budget for this project. These funds will be transferred to the city of Springfield in order to payments through the Missouri Communities Trust Fund, via the Missouri Arts Council. And the funds will be used to pay for design and construction and other costs associated with the Springfield Art Museum expansion renovation project. I'm happy to answer any questions.
This allows for the receipt of appropriation.
Thank you, Jaycee.
This allows for the receipt of the appropriation from the Missouri Arts Council. Questions for Mr. Nelson? Sir, thank you. Are the scheduled speakers?
Yes, sir.
In that case, the public hearing is declared closed as a receipt of appropriation of the grants that qualifies for one reading of the city council. Questions or comments from members of council? Say them now, please, both. Council 2024-247 passes. We now refer to bills requiring one reading. This council, Ms. Connor, would you please read Council Bill 2024-248? Council 2024-249 together. I would note that after the new rules, bills, and we have public hearings, that they will be considered in their own separate.
Council Bill 2024-248, a special ordinance authorized by the city manager designate to enter into a Missouri Department of Natural Resources for the purpose of establishing American Rescue Plan Act grant funds to support construction of stormwater infrastructure by Hilton Avenue from Mount Vernon Street to College Street in the amount of up to $466,992.21 amending the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget and declaring that this ordinance qualifies for approval in one reading pursuant to Section 2.16, subsection 25 of the city charter. Council Bill 2024-249, a special ordinance approving the plans and specifications for American Rescue Plan Act sidewalk road and stormwater improvements for Hilton Avenue from Mount Vernon Street to College Street, accepting a bid of Rod Monver Brothers Excavating Company for construction of the project.
If you know that part of town, though, it really needs some cleaning up environmentally.
Designate to enter into a contract with such better and declaring that this ordinance qualifies for approval in one reading pursuant to Section 2.16, subsection 25 of the city charter.
Mr. Gage. Thank you. We have a former chair of the municipal board of boards.
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. So these two projects, or these two items on the agenda are both related to Hilton Avenue. And there's a location map here between Mount Vernon Street and College Street. Hilton today is a narrow street. It has ditches just off the pavement on both sides. And there's quite a bit of traffic for a little street due to proximity to the west coast.
This one's about traffic safety. This is a good one.
Includes a frequency that lies in the pavement, add curb and gutter, add some stormwater inlets and tidying. This will provide improvements to the stormwater infrastructure and to the safety of the roadway. The first item is to enter into an agreement with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources to accept ARBA grant funds in the amount of $466,992.21 to contribute to the construction of the improvement on Hilton Avenue. The second item that we have is to accept the bid of Rod Monver Brothers Construction for $589,999. We did have four bids submitted for this project. Rod Monver was the low bid, our engineer's estimate was $810,556. If accepted, the ARBA funds would cover about 79% of the construction and the 40% capital improvement sales tax and 80% competition sales tax would pay for 21% of the.
Questions on either bill?
Does Hilton have sidewalks on the side?
It has sidewalks on, on, I can't remember now. It has sidewalks, I know, on one side, and we are adding sidewalks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Are the scheduled speakers on? In that case, the public hearing is declared closed per city charter, these qualify for one reading. So we will first consider the Council's 2024-248. In that case, no consideration questions or comments from members of council. Say them now, please, both.
I'm glad to see that one pass.
Council 2024-248 passes. Council 2024-249 is now also eligible for one reading in front of council. Questions or comments from members of council? Say them now, please, both.
Jaycee is in the live stream.
Council 2024-249 passes, Council 2024-250.
Council 2024-250, a special ordinance approving the plans and specifications for the replacement of the Walnut Street Bridge over Hilton Creek Project, accepting the Department and company in the amount of $3,234,272.60 for said project, authorized by the city manager designate to enter into a contract with such better, amending the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget of the Department of Works to appropriate additional federal funds and declaring that this ordinance qualifies for approval in one reading pursuant to charter section 2.16, subsection 25.
Mr. Gage. Can we become his bookshelf or would you like to sign this one?
Good evening.
Good evening. So this is the Walnut Street Bridge over Hilton Creek. It's located on Walnut Street.
Joko, what's up, brother man?
The project we have proposed is a complete bridge replacement and it doesn't include accommodations under the bridge for a bridge trail. We received only one bid for this project. So we did reach out to other landholders to inquire about why they chose not to bid on the project. They said that there were some that were interested in the project but had recently gotten other projects and didn't have the capacity to do the work. We do know that bridge construction is specialized and that we do have a smaller pool of contractors that are able to do this work as compared to sidewalk projects or a simpler stormwater project. The bid we received was from Hartman. It was for $3,234,217.60. Our engineer's estimate was $3,769,849. The project includes $550,640.80 of gas and water improvements that would be paid for by city utilities and the remainder would be funded 80% from the off-system bridge program and 20% from the 40% capital improvement sales tax.
Other questions, please, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are the scheduled speakers? Mr. Gibson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question about the timing. I looked over the contract and it doesn't identify a project schedule. I recently reached out to the city manager just asking for an update on all of the various projects that are going on in 23 and the anticipated impact. So if this project could be a part of that data request, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Other questions, your congress? In that case, please.
Hey, Jeannie, thanks for being here.
Council 2024.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I may have not recorded correctly that I go over the open of public hearing. There are no speakers.
I was going to ask you if I did that, I don't recall.
Yes, there are, there are no public.
Public hearing is declared closed. And I have now another opportunity for council. Say them now, please, both. Council 2024-250 passes, Council 2024-251.
Council Bill 2024-259, a special ordinance authorized by the city manager designate to accept funds from the state of Missouri through the Missouri Department of Social Services in the amount of $970,000 for use for the Springfield County Health Department Standing Connects Program, amending the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget in the amount of $970,000 to appropriate funds and declaring that this ordinance qualifies for approval in one reading pursuant to Section 2.16, subsection 25 of the city charter.
Mr. Gage.
Please, Mayor, would you take it down to the Department Director's office?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Just wanted to thank you again for your support of Standing Connects and ask for approval to receive this funding. This is the funding that the state legislature provided for us to get this program up and running throughout this first year and then work towards a sustainability plan. So I'm pleased to report that we've had great success in the implementation so far and look forward to additional visits and referrals throughout this coming year. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions, first time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are the scheduled speakers?
Yes, sir.
In that case, the public hearing is declared closed as a receipt of funds appropriated by the general council that's qualified for one reading. It's in front of the city council for consideration. More questions, comments, or as council. Council 2024-251 passes.
That one passed.
Council 2024-251.
Council 2024-252, a special ordinance accepting the bid of J.B. Wallace. the bid of J D Wallace contracting in the amount of one million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents for the construction of sanitary sewers in sanitary sewer district number two, one seven of section number fifteen, located in the vicinity of Banglin Street and Watts, the element, as indicated on exit A. Authorizing the city manager designee to enter into a contract to approve the bond for certain reasons. Authorizing progress payments to be made to the contractor declaring that this work is qualified for approval in one reading pursuant to section ten point one five of the city charter.
Mr. Gay.
Mr. Ron Peters, Assistant Director of Environmental Services, U.S. Department. Good evening. This council bill regards to the district in the vicinity of Banglin, or obviously just northwest of Wexford Field, and council's own board. Project will make sewer available to the personal pump pool through twenty-six tracks and one in nineteen subject systems for a limited city wellness. This district was founded by council back in two thousand nineteen. But recently, in October, there was additional council action to declare a necessity for the proceeding of construction. So bids were recently opened, and there were four responsive bidders. There were multiple bids coming in under the engineer's estimate. That estimate was approximately one million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. The low bid was one million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents for J D Wallace contracting, as the bids appear to pay for the proceeding with consideration of construction. To require those property owners to pay through the [inaudible] capitatus of newspaper and the [inaudible] of this year, and the monstrosity period that's required since that was created, the city first has confronted the monstrosity was filed during that time period. To be clear, there have been two property owners that have recently made inquiries about the district, which I believe councilors may be aware of correspondence. Was an inquiry whether this property owner should have been included on the prior sewer district, and so maybe would they have been in a favorable standpoint in being included in this district. Then there was a second inquiry from a property owner that is already connected to the sewer. They were able to do that by connecting the infrastructure build as part of the adjacent district, and they were inquiring whether they could be excluded from also the [inaudible] current district. The American Services Department has responded to each of those inquiries with reasons hardly known to the city. Can [inaudible] discuss managing activities with other property owners in that district and other districts.
Y'all stay tuned, I've got sixty-two percent battery. I'm doing A, okay? Thank every last one of y'all for being here. I love you each bunches.
[inaudible]
I know he will too, Boa Kamo.
Received and outlined methodology, pre-used once construction is completed to assess project cost to the property of the [inaudible] and the [inaudible]. We recommend, we can get within the acceptance of this, but I have no certain questions.
Questions, Mr. Peter.
Just, I was looking at the explanation sheet, and it says the current, the current cap for eighty-three dollars for single-family residential property owners. Is that a cap on the property, the total property tax?
It's a, it's in code, it's a [inaudible].
Sorry about that.
Programs that have been placed for quite some time that's applicable to single-family residential property use. And so when we make these assessments, it's on a square footage basis to the law. Sometimes the law is enlarged, but it just has a single house name, the substance can be [inaudible]. Under the [inaudible] cap for those are currently eighty-three hundred dollars in exchange for that property, and we're entering into an agreement that this property will stay as the [inaudible]. If that use changes within certain time periods in the agreement, and there should be additional cost to cover it, that is then further to become due.
So eighty-three hundred dollars is the total of the property owner to be responsible for? It has nothing to do with what their tax rate actually is?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think, you know, I know a few complain about that, but I think it's important for the city to [inaudible] these things, as we can establish a [inaudible]. How many subject systems we still have in the city?
With this district construction, and with another one, this is a recent council action on that will probably have some bids. The number is under three hundred, was twenty-two fifty and three hundred. I don't have the exact number.
And is there a plan to eliminate all subjects in the city?
We have [inaudible] continue to do more districts, I will say, where each, there's a reason that the last [inaudible] they're getting a little more expensive each one, a little more difficult. There may show a time when we need to consider whether every single property needs to be eliminated, but our councils have made that a goal, so that's the goal we're working toward. We still believe there is quite a number we can remove before we stop doing these decisions.
Thank you. I think it's still an important goal, and I think I appreciate the work you guys do. Environmental protection.
Mr. Lee.
I would just like to just close that J D Wallace is a client of mine.
Other questions for Mr. Peter? Sir, thank you. Are the scheduled speakers?
Yes, sir.
This does qualify as one reading of the city charter.
You're fine, you're fine.
So the original process to councilman's head. Singing out please. Council two thousand twenty-four dash two five.
That one passed.
Now we move to the first reading bill requiring two readings. This call I'm going to ask you to read council bill two thousand twenty-four dash two five three, council two thousand twenty-four dash two five four, council two thousand twenty-four dash two five five, and council two thousand twenty-four dash two five six together.
Council two thousand twenty-four dash two five three, a special ordinance amending the issuance of the special obligation bond series twenty twenty-four of the city spring from Missouri with a maximum concern on six million, five hundred one thousand, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget of the city in the amount of ten thousand, excuse me, ten million, one thousand, prescribing the form and details of the bond, authorizing certain other actions and documents in connection and when a new kind of emergency. Council bill twenty twenty-four dash two five one.
Making me laugh in here, fucker.
Special ordinance specifications for project A, renewed Jordan Creek, New Mill project, accepting guaranteed maximum price proposed by [inaudible] enterprises in the amount of twenty-two million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars for said project, and authorizing the city manager designee to enter into a contract for [inaudible]. Council two thousand twenty-four dash two five five, a special ordinance approving the plans and specifications for project B, renewed Jordan Creek, Jordan Creek, Bucks, Albert, and Phelps, and [inaudible], accepting the guaranteed maximum price proposed by [inaudible] enterprises in the amount of four hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars for said project, and authorizing the city manager designee to enter into a contract for [inaudible]. Council two thousand twenty-four dash two five six, a special ordinance authorized by the city manager designee to enter into a cooperative intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Governors of the Missouri State University.
Hey, lucky laptop, thanks for being here, brother man.
[inaudible] support of the New Jordan Creek project for the not-to-exceed price of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and sixty cents.
Mr. Gay.
Thank you, Mayor. We have heard from President, Professor, and your public works. And if there are questions regarding bonding and financial, we also have, of course, [inaudible].
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Council bill before you tonight cease authorization for the issuance of up to six million, five hundred one thousand in special obligation bonds associated with the Missouri State SRF loan fund. City Springfield, for the City Springfield renewed Jordan Creek project, amends the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget by ten million, one thousand dollars to improve the bond principal issuance cost. I know the cost, federal grant fund for pan-federal grant funds totaling three point five million for water quality and affordability grants associated with the SRF loan. The SRF loan grants will support the construction of the new Jordan Creek from Maine to [inaudible] and enhance the quality of the Jordan Creek watershed through green infrastructure.
I like that.
Public Works recommends approval of this bill and related budget adjustments will secure a lower interest funding for the project to ensure its success to completion. I'm happy to answer any questions. If there's any specific financial questions, we don't have any available.
Thank you. The questions for Mr. President, I'm sure Mr. Hope. Sir, thank you. Other scheduled speakers?
Yes, sir.
That case, the public hearings called is declared closed. Let me note that the second reading for this bill will be scheduled on December three, and has to celebrate the state of all [inaudible].
When God gives me lemonade, I make lemons.
Close along in November. So with that, the public hearing declared closed, council alone as matter. Special call on council on December three, two thousand twenty-four, two five seven.
That's great, I love that.
Council two thousand twenty-four dash two five seven, a general ordinance amending special ordinance six eight six three to reallocate a hundred thousand dollars appropriately to Department of Planning and Development for the housing and urban development, five-year consolidated plan to support housing and the remaining balance of fifty thousand dollars appropriated to the five consolidated plan for fair housing to fund the Sunshine Street corridor plan.
Mr. Gay.
Thank you, Senator. [inaudible].
Good evening. The ordinance in front of you tonight is really to bring out the findings that we had in our last committee, our ARPA committee hearing that we had last week, reallocating about a hundred thousand dollars that planning had been awarded for [inaudible].
That is funny.
Housing, and the balance of their consolidated plan for fair housing to the Sunshine Street corridor plan, which is approximately seventy thousand, five hundred. With that, there will be no budget adjustment necessary since it's already budgeted in the planning department, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Hope? Mr. Simpson?
Thank you. I think just a quick note that, as you mentioned, this was out of the recent ARPA committee meeting, and it was a remuneration, you mean a recommendation from the committee, so the sponsorship should reflect all four members.
Questions, Mr. Mayor? Thank you, sir. In case public hearing declared closed, council alone as matter on December sixteenth.
Council two thousand twenty-four dash two five A, a special ordinance authorized by the city Springfield of Missouri, and I'm going to bring up the [inaudible] for the purposes, excuse me, of enforcing her as the [inaudible] authorizing the mayor to execute the same line on behalf of the city Springfield.
Thank you. We have city attorney Jordan Paul.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council. This is the council bill approving [inaudible] one of the greatest [inaudible] contracts, but just to go through a couple of high points, the employment does continue to be at will for [inaudible]. It doesn't include [inaudible]. 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 [inaudible].
Questions for Mr. Paul? Sir, thank you. Other scheduled speakers?
Yes, sir.
That case, public hearings declared closed, council alone as matter on December sixteen. Mission of the [inaudible].
Terry Rucker.
This is our dude right here.
Thank you for having me. I have two things. The first thing is, I want to read this statement that I got from my wife about an incident that happened at my house March nineteenth this year, and they said that she was not allowed to file a complaint because somebody else had filed a complaint, and at a minimum, that's a due process violation. Let me read this statement real quick, and then we'll start. That's okay? All right. Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm here to address a complaint about how my concerns regarding police misconduct were handled. On October eighth, twenty twenty-four, I filed a formal complaint to Springfield Police Department detailing allegations of unwarranted force used against me, not once, but twice, and officer, and an officer entering my home without permission. Within just a matter of days after filing my complaint, I received a letter dismissing my complaint. The department informed me that another citizen had already filed a complaint related to this incident, and claimed it had already been handled. Let me be clear, my, her complaint is not the same as the other. While the prior case alleged excessive force against another individual, hers involved a different incidents, different concerns, and different evidence. Yet, my complaint was set aside without any independent review. She was never contacted before a statement or given the opportunity to provide her video evidence. This is not just an oversight. It raises serious concerns about procedural fairness. Missouri law requires police departments to investigate complaints and resolve them within specified timeframe, ensuring transparency and accountability. Even if the previous complaint has been resolved, it does not absolve the department of its responsibility to investigate new allegations, especially when they involve unique and serious concerns like unauthorized entry into my home and the force used against me. This issue also touches on principles of due process, which are fundamental to our justice system. Due process ensures procedural fairness and handling grievances. By dismissing my complaint without investigation, the department disregarded these principles and undermined public trust in the oversight process. Adding to this concern is the fact that police claim they were responding to a domestic incident to ensure my safety, but I've never been given access to the supposed [inaudible] to confirm this. They questioned me as if I were in danger, but then assaulted me in front of my child and neighbor. I'm not supposed to teach my daughter to trust law enforcement after such experiences. I also understand that the officer involved, one of the officers involved, has been dismissed from the department for a completely unrelated incident in which he reportedly ran a red light, hit a car, and sent someone to the hospital. And that occurred just three days after violating my civil rights in my home. This pattern of behavior led us towards the importance of holding officers accountable through thorough investigation of each complaint. I'm here today to add to fairness, transparency, and accountability. All I am requesting is a fair and independent review of my complaint. Our community deserves better, and I hope the council will consider taking action to ensure that every resident concerned are treated for the seriousness they deserve. Thank you for your time and consideration. That was her statement.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay. I think I have a minute, right?
Yeah, it's forty-three seconds.
Forty-three seconds, all right. And the reality of the fact, with the situation, the civilian review board didn't really have taken into account anything that happened. Nobody did any investigation, and they went ahead and found everybody not guilty, and the fact that Officer Miller, who assaulted me back in twenty twenty and in twenty twenty-one, was, and was fired for it, or retired early, and then came back, you guys hired him back six months later, is a fucking problem, all right?
Sir, no language like that.
First Amendment.
Proceed, you've got minutes, six seconds.
Minutes, six seconds. Yeah. All right. The First Amendment says, I can tell you to go fuck off, because that's what we do around here, and what I do is I speak on the First Amendment, and when the police is doing wrong, and y'all are doing wrong, I'm here to say something about it. That's it. I hope I don't have to keep coming up here, but every time I come up here, it's because the police have done something to me. It's not like I keep chasing them down. I stopped chasing them, and now that I'm here, it's because they keep coming to me. So now I will go back to chasing them. We must hold them accountable, because accountability and transparency is what is needed, and that's what I'm looking for. And Officer Miller needs to be fired, and I'm glad y'all already got rid of House Nick, because, you know, he's, he's a danger. If a cop, if an officer cannot abide by the Constitution, maybe it shows a proclivity for endangering the welfare of the community. maybe it shows a proclivity for endangering the welfare of the community.
Thank you, sir.
Amen.
Tim Havens.
Can I go out here?
How about you, Mayor?
Yeah.
Uh, just, uh, thank you, Mr. Holmes. On October the seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, Building Development Services Director Martin Google issued an order to the Millennium Company of Cleveland, Ohio, owners of the Genie Land Apartments. Mr. Google's order, among other things, required Millennium to provide a copy of an executed contract with an elevator contractor, PK Elevator Company. The contract was also to show proof of payment of two hundred and two thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollar upfront payment for pre-production and engineering costs, paid by Millennium to PK Elevators. This element is a key provision to everything about this proposal. No work can start, and no materials will be ordered, in short, nothing will ever commence, there is no meeting of the minds, there is no contract without this deposit. Mr. Google's order gave a time limit of fourteen days for Millennium to comply. Today, thirty-two days later, Millennium has not provided this ordered information as
Go ahead and post it, cut it and post it.
However, on the thirty-first of October, on the last day of the fourteen-day deadline, the city administration issued a press release
I'm speaking for my little brother, go ahead and cut it and post it.
We have received a signed contract proving that the proprietary, the property owners had contracted with an elevator company, PK, to replace both elevators at the Genie Land Apartments. This satisfies everything that was due to the city by today. Great news Springfield, if only if it were true, but it is. There are many things that are missing, needed to be in Millennium's response to make it true and fill Mr. Google's order. First, there is actually no proof of any payment, this is a key provision, for payment is the contingency the whole proposal depends on. No two hundred and two thousand seven hundred thirty-dollar deposit, no contract, there is no meeting of the minds. Also, the city says the proposal states that two elevators are included to be repaired or replaced. I have searched, I cannot find the second elevator anywhere without it, only one, so show me where it is. The city has chosen to track this falsehood, some would say a lie, off to the public. City council, if there's an accomplice, may not speak enough to cover the public of this dishonesty. It's not difficult, it's not that difficult to read the proposal and find it has no reference to any payment, and nothing about a second elevator. Today, thirty-two days later, there is still no information about these two items. The city's false statement and council silence is dishonesty to deceive the public into believing that the Genie Land situation is being handled by the city, and progress is being made. The city has it under control, this is the dishonesty that council by silence has validated. It's my belief that the city deception was delivered, and that council silence was due to negligence. I feel council displayed a lack of effort, a lack of caring, and that since no council member objected, then probably no council person has ever. There is a certain pressure and disappointment by a significant number of Springfield, of the Springfield population in the lack of action or enforcement of codes and laws by the city. A significant sympathy exists for the residents of Genie Land and the hardships they have had to endure these many months. Meanwhile, and still, Genie Land residents continue to endure the daily battles with steroids, many requiring the aid of a cane walker or truck. My view of all this is that it is a disgrace. The shame that you represent our city and issue us false statements, a disgraced city council's lack of effort, and concern for fellow senior citizens. Why do the, when do the residents of Genie Land get the justice that they seek for a more decent life? Justice delayed is justice denied. Now, I'm delivering this message to you with a emotion of community concern, but I hope you receive it without anger, and as constructive criticism. I would like to have some comments, if you guys actually have read this.
Sir, thank you very, thank you very much.
No comments?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Good evening.
Um, I thank God for constitutional freedoms of speech and press. Same obvious thing said, without law, there is no justice. So I'm here to ask you to amend City ordinance section seventy-eight to fifty-seven by creating a new statute prohibiting directed energy weapons. In two thousand eighteen, Pentagon teleconference with DOD and Joint Chiefs of Staff, four U.S. State Department doctors said Putin diplomats did not suffer mental or physical illness, but directed energy neural attacks and injuries. The doctors also noted that criminal elements can use directed energy weapons on civilians to their advantage. In the nineteen fifties, Michael Wade surveilled diplomats in Moscow and the seas. And in nineteen sixties, the same efforts were made on civilians inside the United States, and they were victims of DEW attack for experimental reasons. Um, today, millions of targeted individuals exist in the United States. Most are highly intelligent, hardworking, law-abiding, peaceful, activists, whistleblowers, minorities, and seventy percent are women. Targeted individuals don't know why, they are, uh, why, what they have done to deserve DEW remote stream torture.
This lady is one of us.
In two thousand seven, former NASA aerospace engineer and Missouri State Representative Jim Gus wrote a registry. Quote, "For help with the many constituents in our country being affected unjustly by electronic weapons torture and covert harassment groups. Serious privacy rights violations and physical injuries are caused by these groups and their use of so-called non-lethal weapons on men, women, and even children." In two thousand two, AP reported two DEW attacks in DC, quote unquote, just two. A staffer walking her dog, passed by a park van, a man got out and quote, "Her dog started seizing up." The woman experienced, quote, "High pitched ringing and intense headache, and tingling on the side of her face." Now, an NSA official instantly, quote, "Sickened," just steps from the White House. Now, these were short-lived DEW attacks, but they riveted the nation. Yet targeted individuals endure DEW attacks and harassment, twenty-four seven, at their homes, jobs, and when they travel. Rarely is assistance offered, offered to civilian TIs on federal, state, or local levels. Decades ago, former Army engineer Eleanor White, who is now a targeted individual, termed what is happening a silent holocaust. And she, and, uh, back then, decades ago, was classified for national security. In the two thousand twenty international report, NATO divided, divided war into five, to five different operational domains, air, land, sea, space, and cyber. But the report said there's a new sixth level, the human domain. The brain is the battlefield of the twenty-first century. And the report states that cognitive warfare are ways of harming the brain. Many U.S. Cuban diplomats suffered traumatic brain injuries, some permanent, yet there are no constitutional laws created protecting freedom of thought. Former Navy officer David Voits reported to his commanding officer that a domestic covert Navy DEW program was experimentally torturing U.S. civilians. Later, he too became targeted. In this very room, there can be directed energy neural weapons, and all they are is classified military programs inside an iPhone, a personal computer. They can lock and load a human's electronic
Man, man, your time's up, we'll need to end it there, please.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much.
I just wanted to know if this would ever be amended.
Thank you for, thank you for your comments.
That's it, thank you, and I'll bless you all.
The Committee of the Full recommends upon appointments to the Board of Public Utilities, Jeffrey Shore, Ryan Cruder, Ryan Manning, the term expires December one, twenty twenty-seven. The Committee of the Full recommends upon reappointments to the Board of Public Utilities, Dr. Lena Leonard, and Steve Edwards, the term expired December one, twenty twenty-seven.
Is there any objection? This is complex city council, seeing as the motion, and your, and your simple, careful, second hour motion. Discussion is staying in, please hold, all is enabled, all is closed open. Now, Mr. Houseburn?
I'm Mark, I'm here with this one.
I have two friends that are career elevator mechanics. I hope and pray that you get your situation worked out, it's for eighty people. Exactly. Hey, Terry. Guys, I want to say thank you for being here. That is the end of our video this evening, and, uh, I'm gonna look into that whole D-D-E-W thing at the end, because that was pretty amazing. Um, I really do appreciate every last one of you being here, and, uh, all the thumbs up, and the shares, and the likes and the loves. I've got a couple of you in the, uh, chat stream that I do want to call later this evening, and, uh, we'll just call it a day. Signing out. Bye, motherfuckers.